Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, we're meeting via Zoom. The information has been posted on our meeting notice with the ways to participate via Zoom or dial in, and the recording of this meeting is not to be considered an official public document. So what we've got first tonight is increased heavy truck traffic complaints.
Excuse me, Christine?
Yeah.
Could we say who's on the call?
Sure, absolutely. So, thank you, Bree. So I'm Christine Joy.
John Trainor.
Mark Russo.
Liz Dennehy.
John Wilhampson.
Kristy with the Plimpton Halifax Express.
Art Morton, board of health.
All right, beautiful. Welcome, everyone. All right, so John, you had asked for us to discuss the increased heavy truck traffic complaints. So do you want to take the lead with this one?
Sure. I think I've sent around some of the chatter that was on social media. I believe, Liz, that Tom Millius has spoken to you?
He has not.
Tom, I talked to Tom about reaching out and taking a look at the Carver project. It's right on Route 44, and he said he was going to do that and also talk to Peter Obashinsky, who is the owner of the project that's being developed. It appeared from looking on Route 44 like there's a lot of sand and gravel that is being taken from the Plimpton side, and the trucks are going down Spring Street. So Tom did go, and he did meet with Peter Obashinsky. I don't know if he did it by phone or in person. They knew each other because Tom had worked with him previously in Halifax. Mr. Obashinsky apparently said that the dirt that was being moved onto Plimpton land was land that he owned, and he wasn't excavating. He was just taking some of the topsoil from the Carver side and then putting it there while they took out sand and gravel. He also said two things. One, that the project was coming to an end that would necessitate the use of Spring Street, but that he would also tell his drivers that going forward, they use 44 to go down to Main, 58 in Carver and then take Route 58. So I'm hopeful that because of that, we're going to see an alleviation of traffic on Spring Street.
Okay. And it was Ted who brought this complaint to your attention?
But it was also appearing on Plimpton Helping Plimpton. I probably saw at least six or seven other people, and I don't want to use their names because, you know. The other thing that I-
Excuse me, John?
Yes.
Excuse me, John. We did receive four phone calls to our office.
Okay.
I did reach out, and two of the numbers that were given to me were incorrect. I couldn't reach the party, the residents, and two I did, and I did invite them to tonight's meeting and to check our agenda.
Okay, good.
Thanks, Bree.
So hopefully, the Spring Street traffic, we will see tailored off to almost nothing. The other one that I was seeing was some traffic around Crescent Street Ring Road, and I believe that's to do with the Jeff Randall operation. But that is a right-to-farm issue, and he's taking compost out of there. Tom Millius did say that he was going to go down and talk to Jeff, that he'd talked to him in the past, and he said he's always been receptive, and if there was any issue that he felt Jeff would be more than willing to work it. So unless somebody's got something else that's going on, I feel like the two issues that I was aware of are being addressed and hopefully solved.
Okay. My only concern was that I thought these were all not necessarily complaints, but brought to your attention. I didn't realize this was from Plimpton Helping Plimpton.
Yeah, I did send that around and mention that these were coming off Plimpton Helping Plimpton.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't catch that. I don't know. For me personally, I just would prefer that we don't please Plimpton Helping Plimpton and the people. If they have issues, that they bring them to us directly. I don't know. I just think we've got a lot on our plate, and I would prefer not to be looking.
Well, we have a different opinion about social media.
We do, no doubt, no doubt. So that's my only concern, is I just wish that if people have concerns, they bring them to us directly rather than monitoring social media.
Well, in this case, this was brought to my attention directly.
Okay. Yeah, the Ted one was.
And I forwarded that to you.
Yep, which was great. Awesome. Mark, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, I don't think so. It's interesting, because now we'll have all the more traffic on 58, but it's the nature of living on busy streets, and God only knows. I noticed it on 58, but better that way than the backroads through town.
Absolutely.
It is a little pet peeve of mine to, whatever we think of social media, so often people get a little bit off-base that simply going to the town website or a call to the townhouse where the information is, that people will get the best information. So that is a piece that concerns me, and actually lately, looking at our town website, I do see that there are some upgrades we could do to make it more user-friendly, and I hope somewhere along the way, we find someone that champions that in the new year.
I do think, you know, we should address every little issue that comes across social media, but, you know, my wife received an email talking about it, saying, you know, is there anything that, asking whether she could talk to me, and I did see a person, a neighbor. So a fellow, a neighbor from Upland Street stopped in my yard, and we chatted for maybe 15, 20 minutes about it. So, you know, I don't bring them forward just because all of a sudden it appeared on Plimpton Helping Plimpton.
Good. Well, I'm glad people stopped by and actually talked to you about it, too, because I think some people just tend to vent, and, but if they, if they really feel seriously about it, I would encourage anybody to talk to the three of us or to Liz, because we certainly want to address any issues. So, great, I'm glad that they stopped by, so, good news. All right, so any more with the truck complaints? Okay, nothing? All right, so let's go on to COVID-19 updates. So Liz, do you want to take the lead with this one?
Sure. So we are in our second week of being open to the public. There are numerous town halls all across the South Shore and really the Commonwealth that are still not reopened to the public. So again, I think we have a lot to be proud of in the way of the actions that we took to be proactive and to get ourselves up and running again relatively quickly, all things considered. The new system, as far as Week Two goes, seems to be working out pretty well. No complaints thus far. A group of us met at Denit last Thursday to go over what the lay of the land will look like for town meeting, and Barry has put together kind of a bulletin of what to expect at town meeting. He's waiting for some last-minute comments to come in on that, and then I will be sending that off to the Plimpton Halifax Express and putting it on social media and everything first thing tomorrow. So that will be out there. We're just waiting and kind of finalizing some of the last-minute details. I also expect that the town clerk is likely going to put together a similar document, but what to expect at the town election. So she's in charge of preparing that for the election. Otherwise, we've got a lot of help from the Plimpton Fire Department. I don't think that we can really thank them enough for all of their efforts, not just in helping get us back up and running and the monitoring that they're providing for us every day at the townhouse, but they're also going to be taking the lead on assisting the town clerk with some of the setup for town meeting, like the check-in stations, as well as for the election on June 20th. So they've really gone above and beyond, at least in my opinion, as far as all the assistance that they've given to us and to all the town departments. Additionally, I've been in communication with Debbie Batson, and she's planning to roll out the curbside pickup program at the library starting tomorrow. She posted details for that on their social media and got it out, and then I also put it on all of the town pages. So that looks like it's going to be a really good program. All the staff there are back up and running, working their normal hours, and they've really put in a lot of effort to get this project off the ground. So I think that they deserve to be commended as well. And as a matter of fact, Debbie's working on now kind of coming up with the plans for the next phase, ultimately when they are allowed to invite the public back into the building, how that will look, how they'll be able to do that safely. So they, too, have done a great job kind of keeping up with the changing times and getting, getting everything together as far as their reopening plans. We do have one active case of the virus in town. I was informed by the Board of Health. Otherwise, all those previous cases have cleared, and that's really it as far as the COVID updates are concerned.
Okay. Art, did you have something to add?
No, I think Liz covered it.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, Liz, the photo that you sent of the gym set up for town meeting was so reassuring. I hope we, maybe we can get that out there to the public.
I can. That was actually courtesy of John Wilhampson.
I should have, I should have seen the style and the formatting.
Yeah, the filters.
Obviously, John.
You're all very kind. It came to me via the principal, so, which I think came to him from the family.
The point being, I've been obsessing a little about the degree of safety about town meeting, and that photo shows clearly that there's enough spacing, and hopefully we'll encourage people to come and know that they can be safe and still participate.
And we'll be doing that same setup in the second room. So we're going to make, the gymnasium will be the primary, and the cafeteria will be the secondary, and the goal is, again, to space people out regardless of how many people we have, to space in between the two rooms so that we, you know, keep the overall count of peoples relatively balanced and even.
And the air conditioning will be on that night. There was some talk, actually, it was me who at first thought about, well, should we keep the doors open that go to the outside just to keep the air moving? But there are some concerns about mosquitoes and triple E season coming upon us, that I don't know that that makes the most sense. So I think we'll hope that the AC is in good working order and keeps it nice and cool and keeps the air moving, but we might actually be better off keeping those exterior doors shut, or at least shut most of the way, just in terms of not inviting yet another variable or risk. But we can, we can play that by year and see what kind of a day it is when we get to that point. And also, too, we do have to pursue hiring an AV company to provide all of the video and sound for town meeting. Barry was gracious enough to take that effort up himself. He met with two vendors out there today. He's meeting with a third tomorrow. He's trying to check all the boxes for me as far as procurement goes and trying really hard to get ourselves three quotes to move quickly on this. Time is of the essence. It's bordering on an emergency situation. So we'll see how quickly we can get the quotes back. We plan on making a decision and moving forward as soon as tomorrow, or even by Wednesday at the latest. So that's pretty much it as far as COVID goes.
John, did you have anything to add? John Wilhampson?
I'd add just a couple of quick things. The other thing to remember about both of the rooms is that they have very high ceilings. So there's, you know, these are, these are pretty big rooms, not only, you know, length and width, but we also have, you know, the tall ceilings in there, which will help for airflow. So that should be, you know, a good thing as well. And then I think the, you know, while we decided that we had to go to get external companies to figure out this AV issue, the good news is, is that we, this, we will have done this now, and we will have a better idea of what it is and how, if we have to deal with this again in the future. It's just as we started to figure out the logistics of this, it became too much to try and jury-rig it and then to have it not work right, you know, while, at the night of, you know, this way, this is for these companies. We'll run it, and we should have, be able to have a good experience for anybody who shows up in either room. So I think that's, that's good. The only other thing I would just mention from the school perspective, and Christine, I know you're aware of this, but we, we did, last Monday night, the school committee met and did vote, did vote a new budget for the Denit, which came in 1.63 or 4, something like that. So we were able to get it down from a 3.76 increase down to that. It's going to be a really tight year, but we were able to do it. We were able to, you know, maintain all the programming at the Denit with this budget, and let's just keep our fingers crossed. So, that's it.
Your dog photobombed you.
Did he? Well, yes, this is his pet. He joins most of my meetings, although the fact that he's awake is a big thing. Normally, he's just-
Yeah, that's funny.
I guess the other thing I mentioned, I guess they're finishing up online learning this week at the schools, and there will be a lot of planning going on over the summer to figure out what the, what the back-to-school situation looks like come end of August, early September. Right now, it's a big question mark, but we're getting through budgets first and getting through the end of school, and then we'll figure that one out.
Good plan. One day at a time. John or Mark, do you have any questions? COVID questions?
Only, I hope Liz saw the chat that just came in from the reporter about getting the photograph to her and-
Oh, okay. I did not see the chat on my screen, but yes, I'll send that.
Yeah, maybe even the, the what-to-expect whole thing. She would be willing to print that.
I'll put that, I'll send it to her and to Deb.
Great.
Yeah. Thank you both for that.
I just see that two people have joined us. I believe one is Mr. Beck, and I believe he was one of the people who was questioning the road traffic.
Okay.
So I don't know whether he was, since we've already discussed that, whether he heard that or not.
He probably did not, because he wasn't on. Do we want to do a quick recap, John?
Sure. Basically, the Carver site that is moving sand and gravel is finishing the project that would put trucks on Spring Street. We've also talked to the owner, and he's agreed that the trucks in the future will go down Route 44 to 58 in Carver and then across Plimpton using 58. So we're hopeful that that alleviates any further issues with large trucks.
Thank you very much for the reach out.
You're very welcome. And yeah, don't hesitate to reach out to us if you've got any more concerns. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. So on to town administrators' general updates. Or no, was that part of COVID? Was that a long sentence?
I did all of it as COVID.
Okay. All right. Town meeting preparations, are we?
We don't have anything. I just put that as a placeholder in case it came up.
Okay, great. All right, how about correspondence?
So we do have a request in, and that would be for the use of town-owned property specifically. It is for use of the town green on Sunday, June 14th, and that would be for a peaceful vigil, solidarity, I'm just reading from the-
The application?
Solidarity action to take a stand against racism. Vigil for George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor, Tony McDade, and all Black Americans slain by racial violence and injustice, including police brutality and the pandemic, to be conducted in a socially distant manner. Masks to be worn throughout, and family groups and individuals encouraged to stand at least six feet apart. They estimate approximately 25 people in attendance. They are already in touch with the police regarding parking and pedestrian logistics. And again, that would be Sunday, June 14th, from 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., that they're asking for use of this town-owned property.
Okay, and I think we've got Amy on the call with us. Welcome.
That's me, yes, thank you.
Okay, very good. All right. Can you kind of just give us an idea of kind of what to expect? What are your plans?
Sure. Just apologies for the mowing in the background. So the plan is just to do something very short, but give people an opportunity to come together. You know, I started mapping out the kind of the timeline for the hour, you know, gather, give people the opportunity to make signs at 1:00, and then stand and maybe have a few words from a couple of people at the beginning, and then have the eight minutes and 49 seconds of silence to honor George Floyd's death and the amount of time he was held down in Minneapolis. Give people an opportunity to come back together after that silence, maybe set some intentions about what people want to do going forward to combat racism, and then disperse. So pretty straightforward and modeled, I'm actually modeling it on the gathering that happened in Malden a couple of days ago, or maybe last week. So about an hour. I don't actually have any idea how many people will show up, but my plan was to do a Facebook event so that people can at least RSVP if they're interested, and so I can have a little bit of a better idea and shoot you an email at the end of the week.
Okay. All right. So you are going to have some speakers lined up. Are you going to have any audio? Or is it pretty more just-
I'm not planning, I'm not planning on doing any audio.
Okay, no audio.
No audio.
And what about signage? You gonna have some signage?
Signage meaning holding signs as opposed to nothing, kind of, no, no signs hung on public property, just people, individuals with signs.
Okay. And you think the parking along the green will be sufficient?
I think so. Are folks allowed to park at the townhouse and the library on a Sunday?
Sure.
Then I think that that should be sufficient.
Okay. All right. And my only other request or question would be is that I would hope that you would clean up after the event if there was anything that was left behind. Okay, great. All right. John and Mark, do you have any questions?
My only, or my comment would be, to the degree possible, I would just encourage the social distancing. We're a small town. We can't afford to lose too many citizens, and we particularly can't afford to lose committed citizens committed to causes like this. So to the degree that we can keep our people safe, that would be so appreciated.
All right. John Trainor, did you have anything?
I don't think we can afford to leave, lose anyone, so I'm with you.
True.
No, I think it should be very peaceful, nice demonstration. Hope it goes well, and thank you.
And you're going to be working, I believe, with the Board of Health as well? Great. Oh, we lost you, Amy.
Oh, I will reach out to them tomorrow.
Great. Well, Art's on the call, too, so that's probably who you're going to be talking to.
Okay, great. Awesome.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions?
Just thank you so much for your efforts, Amy.
All right, so we have a request to use the town green, probably the gazebo, too, Amy?
Say it one more time?
Town green and gazebo? Both, probably?
Yes.
Okay. All right. On Sunday, Liz, what was the date again? The 14th?
June 14th.
June 14th, from 1:00 to 2:00.
Yes.
So we have a motion to grant approval contingent on Amy securing all the other necessary approvals as we do with any other request to use town property. Okay.
So moved.
So moved? Okay. All right.
I second.
And Mark's going to second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good. Well, thank you, Amy.
This reminds me that back, Samuel Adams was on the Green, inciting the patriots, so.
All right.
Seems like we're following-
In good company.
Yeah. Very good.
I also keep hearing the rumors of the, you know, the Underground Railroad in our house, so, you know, I feel like it's consistent with us.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right.
Anything else you need from me tonight? You're good?
No, I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending the call.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Nice to meet you all. Bye-bye.
Good to meet you. Okay, anything else in correspondence, Liz?
Um, no, not at this time.
Okay. All right. So we have got a good amount of minutes to approve. We've got a couple of open session and then a couple of-
I've got one thing with the minutes. Liz passed around a draft for the minute process, and we've never discussed it. I think we should do that at some time.
Okay. Well, do you want to talk about it now?
If you both feel comfortable.
Yeah, I think you just, Liz, you just outlined what the process would be to, in order for you to get them up on the town's Facebook page?
Yeah. So it went into, it was talking about like how soon after the meeting would Bree prepare the minutes and send them around. You know, the feedback that I was getting, I had received some feedback. Obviously, John was involved initially in this. He thought 48 hours was a good timeframe. Mark thought 72 hours would also be reasonable as far as Bree getting those minutes to me. So that would be one point to decide on. And then beyond that, once we approve the minutes, if Bree can send them to the town clerk the next day, they've been very helpful in that office about getting the minutes up. We are up to date. Everything on the site right now is as approved through our last meeting. We was right on top of that last week when Bree sent her the most recent minutes and got them up right away. As soon as they're up there, I'm happy to refresh the link on Facebook, just remind people, hey, these are all here and available. So I think the real decision point is just how long do you want to give Bridgette to prepare and send out the minutes after the meeting?
Well, I have two comments. One is just being old. I don't relish getting the minutes a week later. They've been coming just before our regular meeting, and we have a lot going on, and, you know, it would be easier for me if we got them sooner. I can live with the 72 hours, if that's what it is. I would like to, you know, it does take a while sometimes, even after they're done for the email to arrive, for whatever reason. So the sooner we can do them, the better from my perspective. As far as the posting, I think that's straightforward. You just, once they're approved, next day, they go up on the website.
You were going to wait for them to be posted on the town's website first, right, Liz? And then we have the link?
Yeah, the link goes to the town website.
Okay, okay. Which is really fast.
And it's to all of our minutes. Yeah, it's really quick. It goes right to the minutes. There's not a bunch of stuff for anyone to click on. It just takes you right to, I actually, I have it linked to the 2020 minutes so that they see the newest first, but they can go through all of it, and they're all up there.
All right, so the 48, I'm sorry, I wasn't following. So the 48 and the 72 hours are after our meeting when we want the draft minutes, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Bree, what does Bree think she could do?
Hi, I will.
No, which? Could you do 48 hours, or is 72 more realistic?
No, we're 72.
Okay. So 72 is where you'd feel more comfortable committing to that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Mark, you look like you want to say something?
No. The beauty of this is if it works within 72 hours, it gives us the weekend to read them. to read them. We prove them the next Monday. They go up on the website, and the link goes up next Tuesday. Essentially, we have the minutes before the public in eight days, which would be great. And I think if we get into that habit and that routine, it'll be good for us. And we've done a good job in communicating with the public in the way we want. So I'm enthusiastic about how this is set up.
Okay. All right. So that was what we needed to decide on was the 72.
Do we need a vote?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we ask the or direct the selectman's assistant to have the minutes to us within 72 hours of the meeting for approval or the draft to us.
I'll second.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we're at 72. Great. Okay.
Just Liz, will you just, you know, circulate then?
I'll fix it up and.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Also, one other point on the minutes that I think I should just mention, because a few people experienced this. As people have been signing up to get all of the alerts, for some reason, at the end of last week, the website had a major glitch. It sent all of those people an alert that executive session minutes from a certain date were posted to the website. It's not correct. That never happened. If you follow the link, it actually opens up the March 18 regular session minutes. There's nothing posted to the website in the way of executive session minutes. There was no error on anybody's part, not even the town clerk's office. Like, they didn't post anything and call it something incorrect. We don't know why it happened, but for some reason, John first brought it to my attention, and then Bridgette had said that a resident from town had emailed her and was like, hey, just so you know, I got this weird email from the website, and I'm not sure if you want to look into this, that executive session minutes aren't to be sent out. But it's not executive session minutes. I don't know why the website did that. I tried contacting them and never got a response. But if you follow the link, it goes, for whatever reason, to the March 18 regular session minutes. So if anybody got that, it's nothing to be alarmed about. But if it keeps happening, for anybody who watches this or is listening, please let me know, let Bridgette know, in case we need to follow up with the web company again, because it's it's an odd glitch, to say the least.
Right. Okay. Well, thanks, Liz. All right. So now on to the actual minutes. So we've got two sets of regular session. We've got May 26 and June 1, and then a couple of executive session. So why don't we start with the regular session first, the 526? Any questions or concerns?
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
My only concern is, I think at the right under where it says town meeting preparation, it starts into a declarative sentence. And I think maybe it should start that the town administrator reported that and then goes on to what was reported. Otherwise, we don't know where that information was coming from.
Okay. Good suggestion.
That was one. The second one, this is a little more in general. We've been talking about improving the minutes or making them more readable. Since the only piece that is we are actually required to do is to make note of the votes. I think maybe we should underline or embolden the votes from now on.
Okay. Yeah, voted. Okay. Yeah, okay.
Do you want them underlined, or do you want them bold, as they were before, and then you didn't want them like that?
Why don't we make where it says vote, and CJ made motion, second JT 30. Why don't we just bold those?
You want me to bold them and not underline it?
Yeah, I would prefer that.
Okay. All right. John, did you have anything on the minutes?
Not on the 26.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from May 26 with Mark's amendment that town meeting preparation begins. The town administrator reported that the emergency management team met with, and that the vote on the minutes is in bold.
Maybe that's from today onward. We don't have to go back and do.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I can send that to you, Bree?
That's fine. I'll put those in bold. It's not a problem.
Okay. All right. So now on to June 1. Questions, comments?
I had a correction on the second page under the town administrator updates. The second sentence from the end of the paragraph, this where it starts, all reported COVID cases are clear as of today. And and I'm not sure what the next word was going to be.
Well, we need to know who "do" is.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Yeah, "do." Who "do" is? I got interrupted. I don't know. Take it away, honey. All right. So we'll have that corrected. Anything else?
The other thing I'd like to see is, I thought you did a very nice rave last at that meeting, Christine, and I think we should capture the raves so that as people read the minutes, they get an opportunity to see them.
What do you think, Mark?
I'll leave that one to John, to John's good opinion.
Is there a reason we wouldn't?
Well, they're not they're not on the agenda. They're not really an official or a part of the official record.
We used to put them on the agenda. I don't know why we dropped it off.
You told me to take it off.
We did? Wow, that's a good reason.
It was to take away the rants and the raves. I used to have it on there.
Yeah.
I even had it as part of the agenda, and it was like, let's take that off.
Part of the agenda.
It's not a big deal, but, you know.
Actually, the part about being on the agenda, I think, actually is a big deal. I mean, I think it should be. I don't remember why we took it off, and I we're probably driving Bree crazy as as but, of course, life is fluid and things change. But I'd have it on the agenda.
Well, if we have it on the agenda, then it would make sense to have it on the minutes.
So how about going forward, we put rants and raves on the agenda, and then we'll capture it?
Okay.
I think it was me. It was my fault that I took it off. It was me that took it off back when I started doing the agendas because of COVID. At first, we had to strip anything, and then we start to.
It's non-essential.
So it's actually, it wasn't Bree that removed it. It was me. But I'll back on.
Okay.
I think it also opened up the door that it wasn't an actual topic, and it was turning into discussions about things. And it left the door kind of open about like what rant and what rave. And then if it turned into a discussion about, I'll just say trucks, or whoever handles something, it's kind of if someone's name was brought up. So I don't know what you want to do about that.
But on the on the whole, we've done raves. I can't remember more than one or two rants.
Just as long as as you keep it to stuff that, you know, your opinion, and then move on and don't have it getting into deliberating on issues that weren't on the agenda. I think we're fine.
Okay, good. And that last rave was about me, and I wasn't writing it about myself.
All right. You're very welcome. So June 1.
Hold on, I'm adding rants and raves back, correct?
Yes, adding.
It'll be me adding them for a while because I have to do it with the Zoom info. So it's fine. I'll take care of it.
Yeah, it'll be on the agenda going forward. Okay. So we just do we just have that one correction on the minutes with under town administrators' updates?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from June 1 as amended.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Then we've got two sets of executive session minutes, one.
Well, we actually have three, I think. I'm I thought we had approved the April 30th executive session minutes. I know we discussed it, but I couldn't find where.
Where they were approved?
Well, yeah. And every time they're approved, I send an email to Bree, taking the draft watermark out and saying, these are approved, so that there's no question about them. I couldn't find where I had done that.
Okay. And you were definitely at that meeting? Because you had the minutes, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wrote them.
Okay. All right. Did you get a chance to read those, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So why don't we start with the April 30 minutes then? All right. So do we have a motion to approve the executive session minutes from April 30 as written?
I'll make a motion. So moved.
Okay. And I can I'll second. All right. Mark seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So now we're on to May 13, executive session from May 13.
So unless there's any corrections, I'll make a motion that we approve them as written.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And lastly, the executive session minutes from June 1.
Same motion, unless there's an amendment?
No, I didn't see anything.
That we approve them as written.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we're all caught up with minutes. Anything else before rants and raves?
Mark made the second motion on that, correct?
Yes, Mark made all the seconds on all four of them.
Well done on all those for.
Yeah, nice, nice job, Bree.
It's cool.
Very nice. All right. So anything before rants and raves? Nope. Okay. All right. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I just received the the Finance Committee package for the town meeting. And kudos to, really to the Finance Committee and to Liz for really making this happen under difficult circumstances. The letter itself is very well-written. I feel very comfortable that we're doing good service here by the by the residents. So I think it's a very well-done job.
Excellent. All right, Mark, do you have a rant or rave?
I think my rave is for the executive branch of government on on the state level and especially on the local level. With all the stress and sadness and tremendous difficulties we're facing as a nation, and the state, and even a town, and it's the governors and Board of Selectmen and mayors that are threading the needle and balancing tremendously competing and fiery issues and threading the needle and finding a good balance. And it's really beautiful to listen to people in the executive branch wrestling with issues and coming to good decisions. Pretty inspiring.
That it is. All right. I've got two raves. And my first rave is for Liz and John Wilhamsen and Peter Benito and Barry and everyone else that has helped to make the town meeting as safe as possible. So thank you for that, for all the work that you're doing and continue to do, so that we're able to have our town meeting meet in a in a way that people feel safe. Art, too, you've been part of that. So thank you all so much for your your efforts to to make town meeting as safe as it possibly can be for this year. And then my second rave is to the Plimpton Fire Department, who have totally stepped up this entire time with helping us to open the townhouse and keeping us open. And they have done whatever Liz has requested of them. And now they're helping the town clerk to get ready for the town elections and town meeting, moving Plexiglas and getting that set up at the the check-in station. So hats off to them. They helped with Memorial Day. They they are always there anytime we need them. They are a great group of guys with Steve at the helm, and they are making us, helping us, making us look good every day. That's.
Hey, I have one other rave.
Okay.
Which is the trailer has disappeared from the townhouse parking lot. It is so wonderful to have that thing on.
That's a beautiful thing.
Indeed.
Oh, very good.
Well, I think we'll have something to talk about at the Town Properties Committee meeting Wednesday night.
Beautiful. All right. Anything else? All right. So Liz, we are not meeting again until town meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll probably have a pow-wow if needed before town meeting. Town meeting starts at 7:00, correct?
Yes.
We're going to do that.
We're encouraging people to get there a little early, just because we're not sure what the check-in process will look like. So clear is better.
So we're physically going to meet at town meeting at the school?
Yes, all three of us. Social distancing, but probably at the same table.
Okay.
All right. Very good. All right.
What time will that be?
I don't know, maybe 6:30?
To be determined, Mark. We haven't said it yet. It really depends on what comes in that has to be addressed right away.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Very good. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.
Good night.